Okay, if I can call the city council meeting for May 23 to order and we start out with a pledge of allegiance. Chase, could you do the honors?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, starting out, I'd like to welcome a new cameraman with RTC, Brian Gerald.
Grant.
Grant Gerald, welcome, Grant. And Jackie Posky is here tonight, who is interning with mayor this year from IU, welcome Jackie. Okay, we'd like to start out by approving the minutes from the April 25th, if you all have a chance to look at them, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Seconded, seconded for approval by Goodman. Those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seven to nothing. Okay. And the board of works and safety met on April 13th to 27th, and you have those minutes for information only. Moving right along, we have no communications, new business, Tops Industries Tax Statement Renewal. Anyone here making that presentation?
I was not told there would be anybody present for this. They just, since this is their first year with renewal, when they sent, everything should have been in the packet that I finally actually got out to you guys. I do apologize for that. Apparently I had too many rabbit trails that day. But they had submitted everything for it. So they included our resolution, their original Form 322, plus the CF-1. And on the CF-1, it looks like their estimated counts for the current number of employees was estimated on their SB 101, which was their initial declaration, was 61. Their actual is 154. Their projected salaries were 2.26 million. Their actual is just over 3 million. The number of employees retained were 61, and that is the same. Salaries of those is the same, 2.26 million. And the number of additional employees, they had projected 15. Their actual is 93. So they've really kind of exceeded above and beyond what they projected when they first asked for the abatement. And their salaries for those additional employees, they estimated 374,000. It's actually 831,000.
Yeah, it's moving along very, very well over there, and very, very quickly. Aside from this tax payment, some of you may or may not know Kevin has purchased Gertie Engines. Gertie Engines is now a division of Tops Industries. So there's all sorts of plans for movement over there. I would entertain some thoughts on this tax payment request. Anybody have any comment?
I see that what he said he'd do, so as you suggest, we can continue.
Anybody want to put that in the form of a motion?
I was just gonna say that motion.
Moved by Goodman and seconded by Garrett. Those in favor signify by raising your right hand. And it is unanimous, seven to nothing.
Incredible success story.
Very, very much so, thank you. I'm tickled to death to see the situation with the Gertie's program. That name has been there for 50 years, and it looks like it's going to sustain itself for a very long time. Okay, the next thing on new business is Casey Coles and the Walmart Drive requests.
I went to the board of works a couple weeks and presented this to them. Basically, what we have is Pilot Truck Stop, which is Pilot/Flying J. They are interested in acquiring a lot to the south of what we consider the Walmart Drive. And in order to do this subdivision, the driveway that we all know of to take back to Walmart is not a city street. It was never dedicated to the city. And the utilities within that right-of-way were never dedicated to the city. So now, and when I talked to the developer originally when Walmart went in, that was a discussion we had. Because when Walmart actually went in, that was a different type of procedure within the subdivision code. So we talked at that time, and I told them, you know, if any other development comes in, we need to make sure that this is dedicated to the city and make sure it's right. So that any other development around here has free use of this, as well as the public and attaching, you know, to any of the utilities. So that's where we're at today. We actually have an interested party. They would like to come to the planning commission in June to go through the subdivision procedure. There's a couple variances that they have to ask for on small things with landscaping items, which is really more of a dealing with the type of business, not necessarily the code. You know, it's dealing with semi-trucks, so the signage has to be a little bit bigger on the gate, on the entrance signs, directional signs, just because of the nature of the business. So a couple very small variances they wouldn't be asking for, but they want to do all of this in June. And they want to get it all taken care of, and they're moving fairly quickly. So the map you have in front of you is the map I've been working with, with the engineer. There is an existing sidewalk on the north side of the paved drive. So what the engineer did was he took the proposed right-of-way line just to the north of this sidewalk and brought it south, 30 feet south of the existing pavement. And the reason why is there's an existing gas line on the south side. And he wanted to encompass the existing utilities that were adjacent to this drive, so that any incoming, again, any incoming business going around into this area would know that the utilities where they're located. So, and they'd be in the right-of-way. Which means while this is subdivided, the property lines will go to the edge of the right-of-way line. So it would just be like, very similar to your city subdivision plaits. Any subdivision lot would come, their lot line would be the south edge of this right-of-way line. So we have 110 footer, 0.3, 110.3 feet of right-of-way on the west side. That would be the end dot access point of Interstate 25. And 92 feet along the west edge. You can see there are any number of easements in here. There are the Middle Creek Drainage Easement on the east side of the lot. I asked them to pull this dedication all the way to the east property line of Rochester Crossing LLC. Again, just to make sure that anyone coming in and purchasing any of the additional lots, they have the right-of-way established to know where they could create the additional roadway that they would need for their business. There is an existing water line, and that would be the red line that you see to the north. This water line, it's a 12-inch water line that actually comes around Walmart and goes over to Southway 31. For the time being, we're dealing with this section here. The line you see in red actually is covered by the proposed legal description for the water line easement at the bottom of the page. And then the dedication certificate just to the right of that would actually deal with the water line, the sewage line, and any existing utility line, which would be your fiber optics, phone, gas line, and then the road actually in the right-of-way, as well as all of the drainage that's existing. So it's a tad bit busy, but we're starting to unravel the yarn ball. My question to the council is whether or not you'd be willing to accept this drive, this roadway, and into your inventory, if you have any issues having this roadway and all these utilities dedicated to the city for public use. And that was my question to the board of works as well. Walmart and, both Walmart and Rochester Crossing wanted me to talk to both the board of works and the city council, just to kind of get your blessing and make sure that once the subdivision plaits go to the subdivision, or to the planning commission for approval, that this road right-of-way could be placed on that plat in good faith, and they'd understand that it would be accepted into your inventory.
And the board of works had no issues with this. This is part of our progress. This is something that's moving. We need to move forward with that south end of town. The 31 corridor is making this area heat up very quickly. We're getting all sorts of inquiries. The Flying J possibility is a strong possibility. They flew six people in here in a corporate jet, went over all this like ants on a hill. It's a very serious venture on their part. We're getting inquiries from the Tucker Real Estate Group out of Fort Wayne regarding restaurants and motels. The folks up in South Bend who are working on Marriott Project up there, JSK Hospitality Group, had a conversation with them. Starting to see some possibilities, like I say, for this corridor, especially since Kokomo has taken the posture that nothing's going to be built out there on their corridor. They want people to come through 931 and take advantage of the downtown Kokomo. Well, not sure a lot of people want to do that, that are traveling 70 miles an hour on that corridor. So we're starting to look real attractive. My posture is we need to start getting these things cleaned up. We need to start our discussions on annexation for this end of town, which we are doing, and start moving forward on that end of town.
All of this area that you see, obviously, I wouldn't come to you if it wasn't within the city, but all of this is within the city. But what the mayor is talking about, you can see this dashed line just north of where you see the dedication certificate. There's about 11 and 1/2 acres of this parcel that's in the county. And so, and that's exactly what we started to do, you know, what the mayor's saying. We're trying to unravel all of this and get it set to where any future development, it'll be a very smooth process. The pilot group, and they contracted with the Troyer Consultants, and territorial engineering, and they've just been wonderful. I mean, they really have been wonderful every step of the way.
They've been very patient, haven't they?
Very patient. Yes, they have. Very patient.
As can happen with areas like this, we've had a hodgepodge of issues over the years, and we'll just, we'll get those addressed when in fact they become significant to address. Well, I think we're there. And I don't know, I would entertain anybody's thoughts on our taking over that road area, once it's provided to us in the state that meets our specifications. I know Derek's been involved in some of that, as well as Lenny and folks out at the waste treatment plant, Warren. And we're certainly ready to take a real serious look at that, right?
Yep.
I have a question, Casey. On the line here, the map shows the red, green, and black lines. Do they end where the line, where you hand written, do they end there? Or has Walmart tied into those three?
Walmart is tied into all three of those. That is their primary sanitary. You can see the sanitary line. If you follow the, where the green, the sanitary, the S-A-N, that's their sanitary line. It comes north. It comes straight north. That's actually Walmart's sanitary line. And then the gas, I'm assuming, comes north at some point up through there. But that is where they stop, at this area, because they went north to service Walmart. Walmart paid to put all those in. Not the gas, I don't, well, probably the gas, but...
But you said the water goes south, or continues south way, or the...
The water goes, actually, if you look at this area here, the water line comes up and flows all, and extends all the way over here, and then comes up and goes straight over to Southway. And it's a 12-inch main all the way over to Southway. At this particular juncture, though, we're dealing with this section here. Now, I have had conversations with Walmart, their representatives, about the whole thing. At this particular point, Pilot, you know, is, it's their engineers and their consultants that are doing the work on this, so we're just dealing with this little segment. But I am discussing it with Walmart about the whole thing. I just, it's kind of a different branch. I haven't got there yet.
The annexation, mayor, is, what part of this then would need to be annexed?
That area that Casey was pointing at, yeah.
You'd have, yeah, the 11 and 1/2, kind of where you see that dedication certificate, 11 and 1/2 sits in that general area. And then to the west, you have the same situation where there's, off the top of my head, I don't know, 50 or so acres that are in the city, and then another 30 maybe, or 40, something to that effect, that's in the county. But it's all one piece to the west that flows from the US 31 to Southway, all the way north to south. So you have a very similar situation on the west track that you can't see on this diagram.
Okay. Yeah, I'd say preliminary discussions are going on as to what we would need to do to proceed in that manner, make that happen. Like I said, the possibilities for development are becoming greater and greater as we move forward. 2019, I think Rick, correct me if I'm wrong, 2019, they're saying we'll see the headlights of the corridor work going down through there.
What they're projecting.
Yeah.
Especially since the road deal went through, there's more money to...
They have money now to...
They got money, they'll have money starting in 18 to start doing some of it.
Have you been involved in any more of the conversations relative to the limited access points in Fulton County? They even close to that at all?
No.
Yeah, okay, okay. Enough to chew on in Miami County.
Yeah.
But it's time to start looking ahead.
Any other questions or concerns about this project, thoughts?
So what do you need from the council?
A motion to proceed with accepting that that street as our city responsibility, once we have agreed that it meets all of our specifications.
So moved.
Seconded. It's moved by Councilman Smith and seconded by Councilman Goodman to proceed, get Casey up forward, shot on this. Those in favor signify by raising your right hand. And it's unanimous, so along with the board of works, you have a unanimous, continue to work with the Pilot folks. And thank you, Casey, for your efforts. I know it's not an easy chore.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay. Okay, moving right on, let's go to the department heads' reports, starting with Chief Butler.
Good evening. Hopefully everyone received my report in your packet.
Good morning, or good evening. Seems like I see all...
We can start the day over again.
No, please.
Yeah, yeah.
For April, Rochester Fire had auto fire alarms, two in the city. Trash fires, one in the city, one in Rochester Township. Had a dumpster fire in Rochester Township. Field fires, Rochester Township. Mutual aid had one in Liberty Township, two in Henry Township, two in Union Township. CO checks, one in Rochester Township. Gas leaks, one in the city. Accidents, one in the city, two in Rochester Township. Medical assists, 15 in the city, nine in Rochester Township. Drove the ambulance once. Assisted the street department at the boat ramp. Canceled calls to Rochester Township for a total of 43 runs, and we conducted one drill the first Monday of the month. Pending your questions, that concludes my report.
How did our fundraiser go for our injured fighter, maybe not?
Well, the car wash went very well. I think, I would have told you if you didn't ask me what the number was. I want to say 1,500, I think is what the total donations were for that. We'll probably do another car wash later on, towards the end of summer, and that'll go towards our scholarship and kitchen fund that we normally do. And then also this fall, we will have the bike ride we do for our smoke detector project. So if anyone needs smoke detectors, they can come to the station, we hand those out. We have partnered with the Red Cross in that effort as well, too. So those are the events that we normally try to get done throughout the year.
Very good. Any questions for the chief?
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you. Derek, Water Department.
He takes pleasure in veering off of the jay horse.
Yeah, going off the horse.
Good evening. The month of April, the Water Department did the following duties: over the red meters, orders, repair to replace bad meters, locates, did lab work, backwash the filter beds, shut offs, load multiple times, replaced the drainage piping for the high-service pump and backwash pumps in the new plant. And they put black dirt and planted grass seed around at 711 Madison Street, 600 Jefferson Street, and 1127 Pontiac Street. Those were all digs that we performed, and they put the dirt back. We installed, well, we installed the overhead fill-out gas pumps, but that has now been eliminated. We turned on the sprinkling meters. Myself and Randy Carr attended a meeting in Indianapolis on the 6th on a lab analysis. These meetings that you're going to see me go over here are for our continuing education hours. Myself attended a spring conference meeting at the IRWA on the 24th and 25th at Columbus, Indiana. And myself and Randy Carr also attended another meeting on the 26th at Fort Wayne on disinfection. Other digs that were performed, we repaired a broken curb stop at 800 Pontiac Street, repaired an outside pit valve at 1209 Lakeshore Drive, pod hole to main valve shut off for the Manitowman or apartments on 9th Street to determine the size of the valve. We're working with Dr. Hoff on that to make sure things are going smoothly. Converted the curb stop at 9th Street and Main Street to an outside pit for the new park, and made a new tap at 2003 Admiral's Court. Callouts, Randy Carr was called out on the 13th at 10:10 a.m. to 217 West 13th Street for emergency gas locate for a gas leak. And then he was turned around and called back to the same location again. Many more locates, basically, when they called in a second time, they're going further than what they thought. And then Randy was called out on the 24th at 4:30 p.m. to 1535 East 9th Street for an emergency locate for a gas leak. And then just an update for anybody that, out there, for the incident that we had on Saturday. Right now, our...
First of all, Derek, would you explain for the TV audience, as well as the council, what did happen on Saturday, what our event was?
We started receiving phone calls in the morning for cloudy water. At that time, we went out to investigate. We, at that time, we thought somebody hooked up to a hydrant that wasn't supposed to. And then we started getting more calls. They were coming in, this time they were coming in with air in the lines. And so then we started getting calls where they didn't have water, they just had air. So we started our investigation and determined that the altitude valve at the 4th Street tower did not open when it was supposed to, and we did not receive our alarms. And right now, we're still doing our duties to figure out why we didn't receive the alarm calls and the communication errors that we had at this time.
Yeah, we're still in our process of investigating for corrective action. We actually had two issues that we're investigating. Number one, of course, what happened that the valve didn't open, that's our first issue. Second issue is the communication part. Our redundant process was supposed to let us know when something like that happens, and it did not. So we've got two vendors working on two sides of the problem, and we should have some answer to both of those questions by the end of the week. But Derek, I got to tell you, you did a wonderful job this weekend.
Thank you.
Jumped on that, communicated with IDIM, everybody else that would be involved with that process, just to make sure everything was being done by the bureaucratic process we have to follow, to make sure everybody has clean drinking water at all times.
Sure.
And you did a good job.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Derek? More to come on that issue. We'll have more for you in this meeting. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That'll be a good report to John at the next meeting.
Yes, it will.
Lenny Conley, Street Department.
Back to the old scratching on the pad at the end of the day type of thing. I apologize for not getting my report out to you guys. We've been running the recycling route, picking up bags and bulk leaves. June 1st will be the cutoff date for picking up the bags and bulk, and we ask that you put them back, you know, put them in the biodegradable bags as they'll be picked up that way.
Excuse me for interrupting, but June 1st will be the last date for picking up the bulk leaves, right? Not bags, leaves.
Did I say bulk, bags?
Said bags and...
Bulk.
Don't want to confuse both.
I'm sorry.
Then we'll have to have in bags if it's after that, right?
Okay, yep. Be in the biodegradable bags. Sorry about that. Random trash receptacles downtown. We've been loading out compost, sweeping the streets. We patched a few holes, graded in stone some alleys. We've been cleaning the storm drains as we've been getting the flurry of rain the past couple weeks. Fixed some stop signs and some other various signs. That's about all I have for the street. I have a few things for the park. We got the new drinking fountain installed south of the big pavilion. We got a new roof on the bathroom across from the Dairy Queen. That was done Monday and Tuesday this week. They finished up today. Looks pretty good. We've been doing some painting on different playground equipment around the various parks systems. We've been doing some mowing. We painted the west restroom in the northwest corner of the, sorry, the southwest corner of the park. And that's about it. We got the frisbee golf baskets up.
Disc golf, yeah.
The ground's kind of soft, black powdered, powdery dirt. The holes required to be dug 15 inches in the ground. So we dug the holes as Beck called for, and they're still a little shaky. So tomorrow, we plan on digging beside them and putting a few more back to concrete alongside, try sturdy them up as that ground is kind of peat moss in areas. So we're going to see how that works. And that's all I have, really.
Got some signage to put up for the tee markers and arrows for the next holes, and that has some detailed things to work out. But the goal is to be playing disc golf this weekend. Done a nice job, in that much. Also, just FYI, I haven't shared this with you. This just came in this afternoon. Anyone who was wondering about the NIPSCO project, the work that was going on on 13th Street, it's now been about six weeks over there with the tearing out of the curb and the digging up of the hole there when they had a leak about six weeks ago. That has still been left open. What's going on there is NIPSCO was not real sure that they had the leak completely fixed. Especially when they would go test after a couple of days, they'd left it open, there would be residual gas being shown. And now it's been six weeks, and they still show residual gas. That pretty much tells them they've got a small leak going on there. So they're going to be driving some holes in the street checking, and before they tear up any more street there. But that's why that has been left open, and they assure me that they'll get that taken care of and put back together just as soon as they can. So that's what's going on there.
And another thing I wanted to throw out there is, Mark, the plan on getting the community center parking lot and the church parking lot milled Thursday? community center parking lot and the church parking lot milled Thursday, this week. And it should be paved Friday, weather permitting.
And striped this weekend.
We're gonna try to get it striped this weekend early next week before the big meeting on Thursday.
Yeah, great.
Actually, I'll clarify, it's not actually the church parking lot.
Yeah, it's our parking lot.
I wanna make sure. It's the city parking lot across from the main street.
Yeah, let's just say, let's just say if you're going to church, you probably park there.
Thank you, Bruce.
You think so, maybe?
Sometimes I gotta remind myself that that camera's pointed on me.
I don't park there. You don't park there? You don't go to church?
He walks down the street a little bit.
It'd be longer for me to drive over there. Okay.
Or to the private residence.
Anything else for Lenny? Any questions? He's got a lot of these plates, a lot going on. You're doing a good job, man. We've actually got some folks working on our gardens, you know, we've got five or six gardens in the community that the Garden Club used to work on. And last year, I had seven ministers come visit me and say, hey, we like what's going on in Rochester, whatever we can do to help. So I challenged them to that. I said, hey, we've got these gardens, and man, it'd be great if the seven churches, whatever, would take these under their arm to take care of. And Don Meyer, Reverend Meyer, who's heading up the group, he got folks involved, and Reverend Jim over at the Heartland Church has contacted us, and his group is going to be working on the butterfly gardens this, this Sunday. So they'll have the butterfly garden out at the public landing all cleaned up and looking nice, so. And that takes a load off Lenny in the park area.
Yeah, absolutely.
Wonderful. Thank you, Lenny.
One more other thing with the park, we are getting, today they was out there installing the guttering systems on all the pavilions, and that looks nice as well.
Okay, okay.
And they was, they was wrapping up, wrapping that up and that at the end of the day might quit, so. That's about all I got.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike.
Should just note, too, that we are having regular staff meetings every other week now, made up of the department heads and the two chiefs. And one of the outcomes of our first staff meeting was, we've pulled out our safety policy and gone through it, realized that after going around and looking at some things being done and had a couple incidents happen, that we need to work harder on our safety equipment, wearing of our safety equipment. So if you see anybody mowing the yards out there with a hard hat on, glasses and earplugs, or string trimming, or anything like that, or certainly any of our folks in the service trucks, they'll have this equipment on now. And it's, it's kinda long overdue, we were pretty, pretty homey about that. Now we're, we're changing that, that culture. And Lenny, thank you for your, your help in that area, you've been very good with that. Okay. Save Chief Schatz for last. Good evening, Chief.
For the month of April, we had a total of 14 accidents, all of those being property damage and no injuries. We issued 117 total warnings, 54 total offenses, 32 case reports, 772 calls for service, 34 lockouts, three towed vehicles, and 17 people incarcerated. You'll see under total warnings, we had six city ordinance warnings. It is grass season, so by all means, if you see anything, let us know. I think we've issued at least 20 warnings this month already, so we're really trying to stay on top of it. And then you have the crimes that people were locked for for the month of April. If you guys have any questions about those. Other news, we did have testing on May 6th for our hiring process for two police officers. We had 21 people show up, which is, I can't remember the last time we had that many show up, so we're very pleased with the outcome. We had 13 people out of the 21 pass the test.
That's wonderful.
Yep. Better than our, our average over the last couple of years. I don't know if it was bad timing or what it was, but it's, it's working out right now. Background investigations were due back today, we're gonna have command staff meetings on June 7th, and I anticipate them being ready for Board of Works interviews on June 22nd. And I'll leave that up to you, Mayor, to figure out how we wanna do that, if we wanna do it before the meeting, or if we wanna have it on a separate day, a special meeting.
I think we'll do it similar, or the same way we did it the last time. Yeah, it worked out very well.
Also, we had our ladies handgun class this past Sunday. We had 20 ladies show up. It was a good class, great participation, a lot of positive feedback afterwards. We spent about an hour and a half or so in the classroom downstairs, and then about two hours outside at the range. Nobody got hurt. Nobody left with extra bullet holes, so it was a good day. It was, we had good weather, a little bit of downtime. I think 15's the number, I really do. We had four groups of five, and there was a lot of downtime for the ladies between the groups, so I think 15's our number. Because we have, when, we have five of them at the firing line at the same time, we have one officer with each lady. There's some of the ladies that they just bought the gun and never had it loaded before, didn't even know how to load it, so we wanna make sure everyone does things safely. We don't need accidents.
Matter of fact, weren't you telling me that your champion shooter, they have a little competition at the end of the training, had never fired her gun before coming out?
Apparently she picked the right one.
There's some naturals out there, look out.
Today was our last walk to school day for Riddle School. We've been doing that Tuesday mornings with the State Roster School Committee. And I went to a school safety meeting last week, and they did ask about bringing back the crossing guard at 15th and Main. So I wanna kinda get the council's input on this, because it was always funded through the city, through the police department's budget. I can add that to next year's budget. I don't, Shado, do you remember how much it was?
It was, it basically was a stipend. 96 rings in my head, but I'm not sure if that was, like, if it was 96 per week, or how, I would have to look, to be honest with you.
We'll do some checking, but they'd asked that, that we bring that back.
I'm sorry, Andy, who had requested this?
The School Safety Committee, yeah, on Thursdays. So I told them I would approach the council and we'd talk about it, it's budget time I'm not opposed to it, I wanna do some research and see how many kids are actually crossing there. Obviously, there's a need for it. If there's even one kid that's having trouble getting across there, there's a need for it, we wanna do it safely.
Do we know if that location will remain, wants the safer routes to school? Project is all completed?
That's been, I, I, yes, that is one of the identified crossings.
That is it.
To get to the junior high and high school. So just, so I'm throwing it out there, just so you're aware of it. I personally would like to see a stoplight there. I'm sure several people will cringe, but I would like to see a stoplight there, like, similar to 9th and Walbash, where it stays green unless someone comes up to it, and then if a kid wants to cross, they can push the button and walk across.
Of course, that would be an end dot.
And probably never happen, so.
Those aren't real smooth, are they?
They weren't real fun about getting crossing, crosswalks across that.
Right.
So I can't imagine a stoplight.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Chief, we've gotta think safety all the time, and if a traffic situation has gotten to the point where we need to really seriously consider that again, I'm certainly open to that, that's.
And I know in the past, it had been an issue. If the crossing guard couldn't be there for, for one morning or whatever, they kind of expected us to take it over, well, we couldn't guarantee that we would have an officer available to do that at between 7:15 and 8 o'clock in the morning. So I just wanna, if, if we do this, I wanna make it very clear that it isn't our responsibility to make sure it's covered if the crossing guard isn't there.
Chief, will they be able to say at the 15th, 15th Street, will they be able to say, tell the children, okay, if you're crossing the street, everyone must go right here, because I'm at 13th and Main, and there are a lot of children that cross there at 13th and Main.
I'm sure, yeah.
I mean, quite a few.
Yeah, and I know there's some that go down to 12th and 11th also. It just depends on what school they're going to and what they think is the quickest route. I, I don't know how you, you manage to get all kids to go to one centralized location. I think it makes sense. But I think if we do bring the crossing guard back and parents know it, they might be more apt to send their kids to that location.
Well, not only that, but if the school's safety committee, if they're asking for that, then they need to participate in encouraging all of the students to use that.
I agree.
Yeah. I think it's, you know, hand for hand, we gotta work that out together.
Sure.
And I will also, just in case, 'cause some of you council members were here prior to when we, when the crossing guard retired, by state statute, correct me if I'm wrong, we are actually required to provide that, because it is not on school property.
I don't know.
There was some research into that, that I, 'cause there was some question on whether the school could help to fund it, that kinda thing. So I believe we need to research the state statute on that, because it could be, too, where maybe we can work something out with the school that if the crossing guard can't be there, if they could provide somebody, because we're not able to guarantee simply because of staffing. So those are some of the questions I'm sure that will come up, but I, I'll dig through my notes, but I'm thinking we found the state statute on, on it somewhere about.
I never understood that, so I wasn't aware of that.
Okay, I'll see if I can find it, 'cause I know I looked it up once before, and I'll see if I can find it. So you have it through the next one.
And I thought, and I was involved with that, and we're for the works of safety, in my opinion, it was that we were not required to supply crossing guards and to have policemen there.
You're correct, we are not required to provide it, but if we do, it's our responsibility to pay them.
Well, I think it was more of the responsibility.
Yeah.
Is the reason we got out of it for the liability is it would hold with.
Yeah.
Because the crossing guard will be one of our employees.
Right.
Something would happen to a child at that point, and we could be liable.
Right, and that was those conversations we had, so we'll just have to make sure we bring that revisit and just make sure that hasn't changed, 'cause that can be something statutorily that's changed as well, so. Okay. I'm writing it down.
Put it on it, put it on it.
Well, all I know is, years ago, when Councilman Smith and I were in elementary school at Columbia, we were crossing guards, we wore the stripe and the belt, and we handled it ourselves. Of course, we had two cars a day back then, remember those days?
Oh, I remember them well.
Traffic has certainly picked up tremendously since, since those days. Yeah, we, we need to look at that.
Okay, I'll refrain from commenting.
No, no, he wasn't blue, I wasn't gray.
I was just wondering if you used an apple to stop the horses.
Mmm.
Yes, you have a question.
It's just the warnings that you're looking for this book?
Well, it was before and after school.
And for which of the schools, then?
Well, it's just at 15th and Main, so.
The little kid's going west, or the middle school, high school, or east?
The evening one.
It is the one, whoever's using it.
Well, I was wondering about in the evening, is with the crossing guard also direct, I mean, let all the cars out?
I think they did, but I think they've changed the route now, so I don't think there's as much pressure on the intersection. I don't think they send buses that way anymore.
Correct, they don't send the buses, and they did that intentionally. So when they had the buses go that way, they would stop for buses.
So that's why I bring it to this, this board and let you guys make that decision. I appreciate, yes.
One more question, Brian asked me a question that I didn't know the answer to. The speed limit on, would be 14, but from the school into town, I'm not sure where the city limit starts and stops.
About Park Road.
Yeah. Who sets the speed limit from Park Road into Main Street?
I don't.
End dot, I believe, 'cause that's a state highway, isn't it?
Andy, can we pass an ordinance? Even though it's a state road? I don't know.
I don't, I don't.
Okay. Okay, I didn't know. It's a state road, so end dot would control that.
All the way up to the stoplight at 25 and 14?
My gainers.
But even the schools don't stop. There's the schools.
They have a flashing yellow.
Right.
Just to.
Otherwise, 45, 2, 31.
Right.
Are those, those signs between there at all?
Right, signage has always been an issue on that road, and for 18 years that I've been here. Real quickly, Riddle Elementary, the fifth grader's gonna have a color run this Friday at 12:30. We're gonna help out with that. They're just running down Fulton Avenue to 13th, up to Pontiac, and then down around to the practice football field, they're staying on the sidewalks. We're gonna have either a parent or an officer at every intersection to make sure they get across safely. I've told Charlie Schwank to let the kids know some of the sidewalks aren't in great condition, so I'm concerned. We've had a spill just on the walk to school day from the sidewalk, somebody tripped over the sidewalk, so, but I've let her know to tell the kids to watch out for the sidewalks. But we're gonna have an officer or a parent at, at the intersections. And then June 17th is the triathlon, and June 24th is the parade, it's a Saturday morning this year. I don't know if you guys were aware of that or not.
Oh, and actually, May the 30th is a big day, the last day of school, but Rochester dodgeballers team is taking on the junior high all-stars for the sixth and seventh grade for the second year in a row.
The City Dodgers, right.
And that, that dodgeball team is led by, by Chief Butler and Chief Schatz, and.
It was last year, I'll put it that way.
Well, Chief Schatz tells me he's on the injured reserve list, so.
I'll be there in two months.
His shirt this year doesn't have a number, it has injured reserve.
I love seeing Billy Madison.
Yeah.
So anybody has free time, 1 o'clock on 30th, and wanna see some old guys take on junior high, old guys and old ladies take on junior high kids?
Is it 1 o'clock?
Stop out, 1 o'clock, 1 o'clock.
Where?
At the middle school.
You can pick us up in ER.
It was, I just, we regress here a little bit, but it was the first year we did that last year, and the kids just totally, totally loved it. Took the, I made a little error, I was the coach, and they said, hey, wanna come over and have a dodgeball game against the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders? I said, well, sure, okay, our guys can do that, three games, that wouldn't be bad. Each class had four teams, so it wasn't three games. Our folks did real well, but the next day, there wasn't an ad veil to be found.
For the next month.
But it's good stuff, and the kids love it, and we appreciate you guys.
And then last on my list is obviously the spill. I believe you all have the packets. I'm just gonna give you the Reader Digest version, it's been an ongoing process for a long time, I know Whitney and Rick can attest to that. They've come back with several different proposals over the last four or five months, maybe. The final proposal was for the $395,000, which the county agreed to, they were okay with that, the annual maintenance fee of $49,000. The mayor and I sat down and put some numbers together, and do you have that?
Yeah, last, last Friday, we got together with some of the folks with the county, and as Andy said, they had decided the mayor, the Monday prior to that, to accept Spillman's latest offer of $395,000 and the 49, 409 maintenance fee. And you can see the presentation we put together after talking about it for a while, as to what we felt our participation should be in that. There were some definite differences of agreement during this process. I've been involved in the purchases, it would be the seventh software package I've purchased in my tenure. And there's one thing about software companies, number one, they're very high margin. This software company only deals with the government, it's extremely high margin. And my point was, these people are used to getting three-digit profit margins, and we need to push back as hard as we can. I would never have anybody from. I would never have anybody from Spillman correct me on that. Their comment when I'd say, you're getting a three-digit profit out of this, their comment would be, it's industry standard, we built the industry standard. Well, that's the old days of government, we need to push back on folks who are experiencing profitability like that. And if you don't believe they enjoy that kind of profitability, you just go on the internet and you can find some information. I found something over the weekend about their president Lance Clark, a very sharp young man who has been guiding Spillman since 2009, taking the place of Richard Spillman, the gentleman who started the company. And in 2014, Mr. Clark was honored by the Utah Chamber of Congress as CEO of the Year, and one of the things he was being touted for was increasing the profitability, not the sales, but the profitability of his company by 200%. I'm used to dealing with vendors who have good years when they're achieving 30% profitability. So when you're dealing with somebody like this, there's always meat on the bone to push back, and that's where I was coming from. We pushed about as, about as hard as we could, and we ended up, I think through our common efforts, Councilman Whitman over at the county did some pushing and shoving when it came to some of the fees that were being assessed. And the project, starting out with a quote of $653,000, ended up just under $400,000, but they wouldn't budge on their, on their maintenance fee of $48,000, which is understandable because that maintenance fee is a guaranteed profit every year. And their agreement said they would cap any increase in that maintenance fee for 10 years to 4% a year. Well, again, I come from the private sector, and it's highly unusual that a customer in the private sector allows a vendor to lock into a contract where you're agreeing on a percent of increase every year. It's the opposite. In the private sector, General Motors, Chrysler, whatever, they're always looking for a percent of decrease every year from you, but it's a little different in this government world. So that's, that's what they wanted for their, their maintenance fee. We went to the county and after some heated negotiations last Friday, it was decided that we would take a look at the package from a standpoint of the modules we were going to use and put dollar figures to those based on the price of those modules. And we came up with a one-time payment to the county of $99,000 and an annual maintenance fee that we would participate in, starting in our, the second year, because Spillman said they would freeze any maintenance the first year. The second year of $10,000, and we would cap that for five years with no more than a 2% increase annually after the five years. That seemed more workable to us, and what I'm asking the council tonight is an approval for us to get those funds, take those funds, the $99,000 out of our LOET budget, we're going to have to make some transfers.
Additional appropriation.
Additional appropriation.
That's what we'll have to do, because we only have $50,000 total budget.
In there, in there right now, but we want to, we want to, we don't want to finance this, we want to pay our portion and move forward. And if that seems.
And if we don't participate, my understanding is the county moves forward and then we're looking at a separate system.
Exactly.
Because they've already signed the deal.
They've already made the deal. The CODI system that has been used for the last 12 years has had some shortcomings that really, really affect the sheriff and the jail record-keeping as much as anything. But I think it was all agreed last Friday that trying to operate on two separate systems probably would keep us all off balance to a certain extent.
And we are linked to the county on our CODI system, that's what we use now for computer aided dispatch and records management software, is CODI, that's what it's called. And we're linked to the county, they have the server, they have the hardware, they have everything over there, and they maintain that, and we are linked to them through fiber, so we are all in the same database.
In our process of investigating, Chief, we found a community that was on two separate programs, and they were having lots of headaches, weren't they?
They were not loving life.
Yeah.
What are your overall feelings on this system? Have you, I mean, you've been part of the demo process, I forgot that you guys weren't invited all the time, but.
We went to the demos, I don't think there's any question among anyone that was involved with this, that Spillman's a bad company. They've got a good program. Quite honestly, I don't hear anyone leaving Spillman to go to something else, it's always the opposite. So I think everyone is in agreement that it is a good software, it's just pricing.
Well, and being very frank, as far as leaving Spillman, once you're committed to that kind of dollar figure, it's really tough to decide to scrap it, move to something else, that's. Their, their 4% cap on that maintenance fee of $48,000 will take that maintenance fee in 10 years to just under $68,000. So when you get tied to them, that, with that much of an investment, it's really hard to pick up and move on.
And my position, my position through this whole thing is that, and Mayor and I have talked about this along with Lieutenant Campbell's, we don't want someone in 10 years looking back saying, what in the world were they thinking? We're paying $80,000 a year for maintenance, now we can't afford it anymore. That's what we are trying to avoid.
Well, very frankly, that happened. Somebody made a decision 12 years ago that CODI was the best thing since instant coffee, and now we sit around and say, who the heck did that? And we don't want that to be our, the future for the people who are going to follow us.
No. And in all fairness, that, our proposal has not been accepted yet, so we don't know, is that correct, Mayor?
Yeah, I haven't heard anything back. It's pretty much what we offered, it's pretty much what we talked about, though, at that Friday meeting.
We haven't heard back, from my understanding, from anyone, as opposed to.
Yeah.
So we don't know, but that's our position.
Yeah, we don't, we don't necessarily want to have two separate systems operating in the community, but he, we're not going to propagate somebody's profitability to that.
And in all fairness, other agencies, outlying agencies in the county, Akron, Kewana, and Fulton, they will be users on the system also. And I think everyone was in agreement that they're so small and they would have such a small effect on the system, they, they won't have to put any money upfront, on the upfront cost, but they have agreed to chip in on the annual maintenance. Fulton's agreed to pay $1,000 a year, and the sheriff and Gail have asked for $5,000 from Kewana and $5,000 from Akron a year towards annual maintenance.
Shaw, my question isn't so much about the system and our offer, but just talk about the LOET funds to the council just a little bit, what happens to that fund, and are we in good stead with that, with what we do?
Certainly.
That's a good question, I would add to that, say, just explain what the LOET funds are for everybody.
Yeah, our, our LOET funds are public, basically the only agencies or departments that can utilize our LOET funds, which is the Local Option Income Tax Fund for Public Safety, are our police department, our fire department. Would you like me to go and?
No, I think if you just reject, they'll pick.
Okay, from the diaphragm. Can you hear me?
That camera over there.
Okay.
We can hear you, Shaw, go ahead.
Okay, good deal. So the only use for that LOET fund is.
You have your television on, thank you.
Well, he didn't give us a microphone today, tonight, to play with, like we did Andy, I guess. So, but anyway, the only use as we can use is for police and fire, in our agency, and because it is only for public safety, and those are only two agencies we have that are public safety. Right now, we have accumulated, we, we do not spend out of that fund at this point, we haven't been spending, we haven't had the need to. So if you, essentially, right now, we have a pretty healthy cash balance in that fund. We're sitting at about $600,000. So to carve out the mayor's proposal, we just need the additional appropriation because last year during budget season, or session, we only appropriated $25,000 for police and $25,000 for fire, that's their standard appropriation they ask for every year. I'm sorry?
Oh, 50, we have 50,000.
50 total.
50.
50 each?
50 each.
We, yeah.
Okay, I stand corrected. So we, so we may not have to do, well, we still would, because if we have to pay for any portion of the maintenance fee along with our proposal, it'll take us over that $100,000.
That won't be the first year, that won't be upfront.
We have, we have one year on that.
Okay, so.
Yeah, and, and it's my understanding, you folks may know or not, but I've been told that the county is looking at financing their big number, they've obviously got a big number to pay, they're looking to finance that. We don't want to do that, we want to get it paid off, move on.
Correct. And like I said, and because this is for public safety, it's a perfect use of those funds.
Okay.
Tough question. What would, what would happen if, it's just as been discussed before, if we would centralize the dispatch, say, it would just be in one location, just for example, that, would that, how would that affect us and would we be into it if all of a sudden everything was centralized for public safety reasons? Everything would be centralized, obviously, right now, the way the sheriff's department's set up, say, everything came from there. How, would that jeopardize us as far, would we still be in the contract where we've got to pay the big bucks even if?
It might minimize, it might minimize our, our portion that we would use, but we still need access to it, because that's the system that we use to access the database, type our reports, so we still need access to that.
I was just wondering, would, would it cut it back, so if, do you not think it would cut it back, so if it was just being centrally located, because then everything would go through the one location instead of two, correct?
But we still need the information down here.
It would still be here, would it not?
We would still be linked to them, yeah.
Yeah, we'd still be part of the, the system and, and have a cost associated there, so our officers could access records and operate with their computers from the cars and all of that.
But I think, John, correct me if I'm wrong, what you're asking is, is, is only the dispatch portion, would there be a cost difference if we did have a separate dispatch?
Well, my, my look at it is if it was going to eliminate, have all the dispatch going over, just say it was centrally located, the sheriffs weren't here, would that cut down, you know, the amount of usage they would say that we'd be using?
That's a, I don't know that it would be that significant, would it not? Of course, the 911 portion of it is huge, big.
And that could be both, that one, you wouldn't need two systems for that, one system could cover that.
Well, the county handles the 911, you're a 911 dispatcher, right? Yeah, the county handles the 911 duties and are obligated by statute to do that. I think, boy, it would, it would probably be, I would think, miniscule.
I, yeah, I would think so.
The big, the big thing is, if you go through the contract, or what the officers would be using.
There, there are different modules within the proposal, you've got a CAD, the RMS, which is the records management, the mobile, so we can have it in our cars, the jail, and obviously, we, we don't use the jail, but we still need access to those. It could eliminate some of our, our portion that we would have to pay.
Just curious.
Yep.
I, I'm going to speak up for just a minute.
Please do.
Say, the system is based off of, it's a user-based system, so total number of users, so we may minimize a few users if we centralize dispatch, but I think what the city would probably be taking on at that point is a portion of probably dispatch fees and salaries.
Sure, sure.
I don't think in the long term, you would see a benefit.
You wouldn't see any difference.
I mean, that's kind of how I see it.
It's a good question, good question. Thank you. Would anyone have any problem with our basing it in that manner through our LOET fund situation?
Where would the maintenance fee come from, if they're paying?
I would assume we would budget for it.
This budget?
Yeah. Because we, we pay a maintenance fee now.
How much is our maintenance fee now?
Our portion is about $9,700 for CODI. It's almost a $30,000 maintenance fee right now for CODI, and we pay a portion of that, we pay a third of that now, and I have that budgeted every year.
Okay.
Well, Mayor, I would make a motion that the city make a one-time payment to the county of $99,000 and also pay a $10,000 annual maintenance fee for five years, that capped at a 2% increase annually, and that we use LOET funds to pay for the program.
Okay, okay, to be clear, it stated the $10,000 maintenance fee is, is for five years, and then a cap after the five years of no more than 2% annually a year.
And that starts with the second year?
With the second year.
That's, that's the motion.
Do we, do we have a second? Mason has seconded it, those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Those opposed?
Mr. Mayor, I'm only opposing because we don't know if the county has accepted this yet.
Okay.
I'm in favor generally, if the county accepts, or accepts our proposal, then I would simply go yes for it, I think, but now, in terms of Shaw actually changing something and redoing everything, and the county come back and say, well, we want 101 instead of 99. So we'd have to go again, I just.
I agree, and I think.
I think they'll be fine on that one-time payment, it's the maintenance fees they're going to want to have, have over, because they have agreed to a 4% every year, and we're saying nothing for five years and then 2% after that, the next five years.
As I, my point is, I'd rather this vote one time rather than have to come back again, if they come back with something different than 99.
So we have six to one?
I'm otherwise in favor of it, but.
Understand, you're mature, understand.
If they don't accept it, then they're going to have to make a counter offer and then we'll have to.
They're going to vote again.
Talk about that.
We just, we just had a vote, can we just, six, six to one?
I do have a question, and this is probably more for Chief Butler. The, we do have, the boys are correct, or excuse me, the chiefs are correct. Sorry.
You guys quit that.
I die for us. We do have $100,000 total budgeted in LOET right now, but that is basically earmarked 50 for police, 50 for fire. If we utilize that whole appropriation for this purchase, then if Chief Butler were to want to utilize the LOET funds for something, because basically, I have it separate counts, so I'll have to, to take care of that, but we would need to come back for an additional appropriation for him, or would you rather me do one for this purchase?
If I may?
Sure.
I would rather you take my 50 and then do an additional appropriation for my line item and leave his alone, in case he needs to use it.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Chief Butler?
Chief Butler.
With, with the balance we have, with the remedy of this project, and, and because it's coming in middle of the budget year, why don't we just take what we've got in reserve and leave the budget alone, just to, to want additional appropriation for this project and call it done?
Because of the time of the year.
Leave our budgets alone and, and call it done. The money's there, it makes sense, we, we're good stewards of this project, we, we have a cash balance, this is a special event that came up, just pay cash out of what we've got, do one appropriation for the 99, and leave the budgets alone.
You know what I like about you? You know what I like?
Sorry to ask, Mr. Mayor.
No.
I was supposed to short, but.
I like the fact that you sat on this side of the table, what, you think, that's a good point. What do you think?
I, that's what I.
I would rather do that, I didn't know if we could or not.
Yes, we can, and that makes, to me, it makes it simple for me, it makes it simple for the council, it makes it simple for public records to say, we made an additional appropriation request for a one-time purchase.
That's right, exactly, word for word, I was going to say that.
Yeah, did you hear that?
I got, I got a.
President Goodman was going to make that suggestion, yeah. I remember this kid in school, right? That was my idea.
So, so I'll go, I'll start the process for that, to do the additional appropriation, get all the paperwork ready, and then there will be a resolution in front of you at the next council meeting for that.
If they approve it.
I would also thank the county for working through this and with us, I know there have been some contentious. been some contention. I know the meetings haven't always been easy, but we really appreciate the working relationship we have with the county, and this is another example of trying to work something out.
Well, yeah.
So really appreciate that.
It's just part of negotiation.
Well, yeah, yeah.
It's no hard feelings, it's just.
No, 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 no.
It's part of the negotiation process.
It's a difference in.
You gotta get a better deal for your, for your, meet county, and you said that you can get that.
Yeah, it, it doesn't matter if it was the county, or if it's Chief Butler coming to me with a fire truck proposal. If I believe the fire truck company is gonna make a triple-digit profit, we're gonna be drilling down.
Look how red his face is on that. I think he matches this fire engine.
Yeah.
Yep, you're expected to.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Thank you, council.
Thankfully, that's all I have, unless you have questions.
Longest.
It is, I know.
Just for, just for memory.
What's your run under in the dog ball game?
Yeah, you're on the, you're on the injured reserve list, but you're gonna be expected to be there, where I'm sure it is. We may have to use you at the last moment.
I don't know, but the Cardinals are up thirteen to two. I'm not talking about St. Louis Cardinals, I'm talking Rochester Hornets Cardinals.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you, gentlemen, and ladies.
Thank you.
Okay, reports of committees. The area planning commission, Karen. Oh, no. Oh, no.
Big report.
Okay. Vetco.
Yeah, Vetco met, and I did not attend, and due to today's events, I did not get my hands on the minutes. I'm gonna report. My apologies.
Makes my mistake. Thank you.
Okay. Park board, Mason.
Well, Lenny covered most everything that I had to report. We sent our meeting at Manitowoc Mountain, where we started. Really did two things. We walked the proposed course for the disc golf, which now has been, you know, taken care of. So thank you, guys, for getting that taken care of. So like you said, the baskets are set. Tees are gonna be kind of working tees for a few months to make sure we know right where they need to be before we do anything permanent. And then we looked at colors for staining Manitowoc, or sealing Manitowoc Mountain again, and that was about it.
Actually, just to give you an update on the tees, we decided today, and we talked to Mr. Copeland by speakerphone, that we'd go forth here in the next couple of days and drive some steel posts into the ground and get some, you know, Denny Connolly's a wonder at painting signs. He really, you know, how artistic Denny was, Marty. He's gonna make some signs up, designating the tee areas, and then a couple of signs for arrows for the next holes, you know, little, go right onto the holes.
Right.
So hopefully, it'll clear up any of that confusion over the weekend.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else for Mason on the park board? Anyone? The redevelopment commission, Terry is not here this evening. He's trying to get some money for the park at the Lions Club meeting. Rochester BZA and council on aging, councilman Smith?
The BZA start, meeting is tomorrow night. There's two things on the agenda. It'll probably be a very short meeting. It's a, a deck issue and a privacy fence around, at the, both of them are at the lake, and, you know, the properties are pretty close together there, so they're pretty used to those variances being applied for, and they usually go pretty quick. Council on aging met yesterday, and from a transpo standpoint, they're back in need of another driver, so they're going to be looking for that. So far, there's not really been any negative feedback from the rate increase. It was a very slight rate increase for the first time in, I think, forever. So feedback there has been fine. The RSV report, they just got back from a trip to New Orleans that was, I understand, very successful and enjoyed by forty-five people. They are working on maybe putting a trip together for the fall to go to Cape Cod. They're looking at a nine-seventeen to twenty-seven date, and a cost of six-hundred-and-eighty dollars. If anybody's interested in that, they could contact the RSVP. Then they are talking about going back to San Antonio in the springtime. They do have a trip to Shipshewana coming up on the sixteenth of June. That's a hundred and nineteen dollars per person. That includes lunch, and it's something called a brown bag trip, and I understand that you could go around at Shipshewana and five or six vendors give you something. Is it a surprise? I don't know, but that's the brown bag trip.
Okay, yeah.
From the council on aging standpoint, the, the building, the city would be happy to know, did pass its fire inspection. Everything that needed to be done was fixed, and it has passed. Last Thursday, we're the senior game.
Yes, absolutely.
And Mayor and I made an appearance, and they were in the middle of their bingo when we were there, and I understand after we left, bingo got a little bit testy.
Uh-oh, uh-oh. They're thirty bingo, huh?
All things were worked out, and it ended up being a very successful day. They did mention Lenny, and the property does look nice. There's been a lot of weeding and cleaning up around the building, and that was certainly mentioned at the meeting, along with the city trying to make sure to get the parking lots done prior to the big meeting that's coming up next week. We are already approved for two new vehicles by NDOT for 2018, and that's the conclusion of my report, barring questions.
Well, one other thing to note about those senior games, councilman Smith and I noted, you know, we are now at the age where we could participate. We need to take advantage of that, because we could still win a lot of medals, you know?
I don't know. I don't know. Pretty energetic city or something, buildings.
Anybody have any questions for Marty? Okay, thank you, councilman Smith, as usual, very complete report. What were they serving for lunch that day?
Pizza.
Yeah, I knew you would know.
Yep.
Solid waste and animal adoption center, councilman Thompson.
There was no animal shelter meeting for the solid waste. Since the last board meeting in April, the recycling center had shipped eighty-one-point-three tons of recyclables with a value of six thousand nine-hundred-and-thirty dollars and eighty-four cents. For the month of March 2017, Fulton, or the County Line landfill received twenty-nine thousand five-hundred-and-forty-one-point-four-three tons of waste in twenty-five working days, for a daily average of one thousand one-hundred-and-eighty-one tons per day. Fulton County accounted for five thousand eight-hundred-and-ten-point-eighty tons, and the rest of Indiana contributed twenty-three thousand seven-hundred-and-thirty-point-five-five tons. There was no out-of-state trash collected. The host fee for the month was thirty-seven thousand forty-eight dollars and fifty-four cents, and the county host fee for the month of January was eleven thousand eight-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Well, at least they're getting back to the figure that was the normal monthly budgeted figure for the solid waste parts.
She said that northern Indiana, there was a landfill that closed down.
Okay.
So that the trash, or maybe it was in Michigan, I can't remember now, but she said it closed, so now some of that trash is coming to us. So we might be able to start seeing.
Well, the original, original agreement was a guarantee of thirty-seven thousand, so they're back at least.
Thirty-three thousand.
Thirty-three, it's pretty close, yeah. So they're back to that figure now.
So that's nice. So far, it's sold a total of one thousand four-hundred-and-thirty-eight orange bags, of which six-hundred-and-eighty-seven were purchased by city residents, and seven-hundred-and-fifty-one purchased by county residents. We have collected nine-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars for the disposal of both items. We got an appraisal done for the tractor. I don't think we've gotten the value back yet. What we're gonna go ahead and do, though, is the tractor that we have now, we don't really use, so we're gonna go ahead and try to sell that, but I think we're gonna first try to get the hood painted, and so we got a quote for that, and I think that's gonna get taken care of next week, and then try to put that up for sale. And then also, the Tama drop-off site is no longer gonna be utilized with the trailer. They keep getting trash and stuff in there, so I think we decided to move that. I think, I don't know.
I think it's up on Wabash. I think that's one, yeah.
Oh, that's right.
There's one sitting there, the old Harchapner Mars.
So that's, I think, we're gonna start putting that there and use that there, so I think that's about it.
You say one's in the Harchapner Mars?
Yeah, one, yep.
I assume, I assume the owner has agreed to that.
Yeah, Steve Generous, and.
Good. Always good to ask the owner.
By the way.
Yeah.
Chase, I have a question. On the bags, on the, the pay-up program, do they, does, do they report on how much it's costing them for the disposal of those bags?
No, she hasn't said.
I'd be curious to know.
I can ask her next time.
I'd be curious to know if, if that, what the cost is of, of the disposal of them versus the revenue they're bringing in.
Yeah, and the whole idea was that it would generate some more recycling, because folks could sort out their garbage and have a garbage pickup, and then take recycling out of that, get everything in a bag. I think you got a lot of people who were recycling originally that are, that are utilizing that program, because we're not seeing a huge increase in what we're picking up.
Well, I'm, I'm guilty. I'm, I'm like councilman Smith. I, we run into each other periodically in the recycling center, in the rain.
Or the recycling.
Well, heck, now you can go to Harchapner Mars's parking.
Yeah, it's closer to.
It's a little closer to you.
Walk right down there. Any questions for councilman Thompson? Okay, tree board and EMS, councilman Fitzwater?
Tree board has been busy this month, and.
Boy, there's been a lot of email activity heading there. I've noticed that, yeah.
On the, the third, the, through the Arbor Day Foundation and for Tree City program that we have, the tree was planted, it's the intersection of U-814 and Spilway, or whatever you call it there.
Yeah.
A group of us are out there, the mayor's there, we've got a picture and all that, so.
They would not let me touch the tree because they were sure it would die, so I have no green thumb, no.
As of yesterday, it was still alive.
Good, good.
It's a good sign. And the first meeting of the month was on May fourth. The main topic of that was the bids for the next round of tree removal. So the bids were sent out to the various attendees in the area who've been, expressed interest in doing it. We met again on special, not special, but the second meeting of the month, we actually did this time on the eighteenth, bids were opened and the contract was awarded. And I understand that you had come in and got your sign, is that correct?
Yeah, and, and let me, I'm gonna correct you on, on your statement. It's actually quotes. It does not meet the specifications for a bid.
Okay.
So they sent out quote invitations.
Okay.
And for, to receive back quotes for those services. And yes, he, mm-hmm, Stormies, did come in and did pay, because they awarded him the quote, the contract for that, correct?
Correct.
Yes. And he was in, signed it, so we're all good to go.
Right. And so that is for the, for the tree removal. The initial bids were sent out for removal and trimming, with Lenny Connolly. Trees need to be trimmed up for the school buses, other things get through. There were some questions or irregularities, not irregularities. Some of the guys had questions on what they could do with trimming, so we're sending out a second invitation for quotes for the trimming. And so I imagine at the next meeting, we should have an idea as to when those will get done, if it's the same person or not, we don't know. And the, the trees that were planted on Main Street, the, I guess, not as a warranty, but it was guaranteed for, they, one of them didn't grow, it's gonna be replaced. Some of them have some dead spots, and he was going to check on whether he could trim those and make them, if they'd survive, or they just need to be replaced.
You mean some of them have died, is that what you're?
No, there's some places where there's some, they didn't butt out, or some dead branches, so he may even try to trim those, prune them if possible. If not, then replace them.
Okay.
And the, the city was, had the Tree City recognition has been renewed, and I remember there were some stickers, stickers that go on the signs for eighteen years, so once we can get those out, that'll be fun though. These are, still is the two, or is it just the one entryway sign that has that, you know?
I think there's, I think there's the.
Just the one, isn't it?
I think there's the one, because we, I think we got a flag instead of another sign, so, because I know they send us a flag every year.
I think we do have another, a flag, yes.
We do, and our flag that was hanging under the flag at the park, I see, has somewhere disappeared, so.
We have, I think we have a new flag, I'm not quite sure.
Yeah, I gave everything to Teresa that I get normally, before she resigned, but I, I don't have anything now in my office, because I handed everything over, so hopefully somebody has it on the.
Yeah, I think our new secretary has all the boxes and stuff.
Yeah. And the Tree City, that application goes in at the end of every year, and so we have to go online, submit the data, which is why it's important, and just so you guys are aware, in order for us to retain that status, we have to track all of the trimming, we have to track all of the removals, all of the replacements, and how many trees we have in the city. So if anybody wants to jump on board with that project.
We have to do it, don't we?
Yeah, there you go, Ted. There's another project with Jackie. So, but we do.
Right, Jackie?
So far, we've been, we've been real good. The biggest challenge we had was, is the recognitions throughout the year, and making sure that we have enough public contact with Arbor Day and the importance of trees and that kind of stuff. So Mayor Ted's, we've been, the board's been staying on him about those, those things, and make sure we have newspaper articles, yeah.
Arbor Day proclamation.
Yep.
Pictures planting the tree, and.
We have the picture, it's going in the scrapbook to.
Yes.
Go for the next application.
Yes, because we definitely have enough trees in the city.
We do.
We'll say that, so.
We do.
But that's why it's important that we track all of that information, and, and the board's really been doing a pretty good job. We've our applications and tried to, to make sure we documented.
They are. They're doing a really good job. And that corridor, when, when it's blooming, looks great. It really does. The prospect of getting all of those trees trimmed and down, that, that's very important, too. We need to, you know, we have issues with storms and trees falling down and what have you, but we keep a pretty good handle on all that stuff. Lenny, you, you're very good in being in the middle of that, too. Appreciate that.
Yeah, that's really helped out, keeping it trimmed up, and overtime hours have been cut tremendously on, on that and stuff, so that's, that's a good deal.
Any questions for councilman Fitzwater? Anything on EMS and?
No, it would be quarterly.
Okay.
It's gonna be in July.
Okay, thank you. The water board, councilman Garrett?
Yes, sir. Let me see, they started off with the, they approved the minutes from the April third meeting. Then the link list was reviewed and approved as normal. Update was presented by Derek to the board that everything was operating as normal, except for what, Fourth Street. Sorry about that. There was open forum for the questions and answers for the new billing cycle, and there was nobody there to have any questions. Carol Wood presented the flyer that she's put on the RTC TV show, programming that they have on there for the advertisement for the new billing cycle, for, and it really doesn't seem like we're having the questions that we expected, and, of course, it hasn't happened yet, but I would have thought there would have been a lot more questions and people coming to the water board meetings or to the council meeting to discuss it. That has not happened, so it's wonderful.
Yeah, I, I like to think it's because of the great communication that our water department and water board have promoted.
There's been enough in all, in all of our billing and everything, and, I mean, it's been put out very well.
Done a very good job.
And then there was the update on the, presented that for the letter, says sprinkler customers, has been, all been sent out. Let me see that, well, Lupita Hernandez will start working June first, and will work until the first part of September. She'll be part-time seasonal, she'll be in the water board office. She was with us a year ago, and she's came, coming back to help, which is great. Have somebody a little bit of experience coming in there, because we have the, I think two younger gentlemen are gonna be back. I have their names right here, too. And they're gonna be back in the, it's Brandon Murphy and Dale Shelver, if you remember, they were the ones that did all the priming and painting. If you remember, they were the ones that did all the priming and painting on, last year that they just painted and painted and painted all summer long. Good guys. An update by Derek was that the board, that the big salt tank project has begun. I'm assuming that it's finished by now, is it not, Derek? Still in the process?
Waiting on the steel from Chris.
All right, okay. There were new employees taking vacation. I had one other question that I wanted to bring up to Derek that is not on the list because it really covers everything, but earlier when he was giving his report, I wanted to ask him about the yard behind the water plant. Have they come back and done anything to level out, bring dirt, seed?
Ted actually had your book on that.
Yeah, I had contacted Duke directly, and they got into, with the contractor. They have to come back and run a, an underground service for some of the lights, and they did not want to get that work done until they got everything torn up and they can put it all back at once, which seemed to make some sense, but they're, we're going to have to call them again because they're not getting on that real quickly, are they?
That's true.
Basically, the underground on the old pole has to be moved to the new pole, so they're going to have to dig it up and slide it over.
I had not heard that, so I was just...
Well, it's a good question. I'm glad you asked, John.
Keeping an eye on it.
Absolutely.
Everybody else has done? Derek gave a very good report earlier on his part, and that is the part that he had left out for me. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, with the hiccup we had over the weekend, not only did Derek and his crew do a good job, but he kept President Davis involved with it, too, and board's working really good, hand-in-hand with Derek on those things. It's a good job. Okay, do we have anything?
I, the only thing with the...
Downtown partnership?
I don't see anybody here. The only thing I'm aware of is the June 24th is going to be the living, what they're calling the living local fest that's going to tie in with the parade.
And actually, the parade's in the morning this year, correct?
Yes, yes. Parade's in the morning. I believe it starts at 9:00.
That's good.
Yeah, and then after that, then they'll have, what they're trying to do is bring in local entrepreneurs, restaurateurs, and have just kind of like a tasting of Fulton County in the same area. We're going to close off that 100 block, 100 East block of 8th Street and just right there in that neck of the woods on the courthouse and that kind of thing. So, they're trying to keep that, what we used to call the block party, and keep that on that same day to try to basically enhance our local businesses and entrepreneurs in the community, is what their focus is. Other than that, I, we are supposed to have a board meeting, I think, Thursday, so I'll, I'm not sure that I'll make it because it bumps right up against the Board of Works meeting and right up against another meeting I have, so we'll see.
Well, and then, too, referencing the parade, anybody wondering why it was changed from a late afternoon, early evening parade to an early morning parade? Apparently, there was a survey taken and folks decided they would like to have parades early in the morning rather than in the evening, so they're trying that this year is what I've been told.
Well, and the evening parade started out years ago as being a twilight parade. Well, now it's daylight savings time, it's kind of hard to get a twilight parade and have the floats lit up when there's no darkness, it's daylight, so that makes it a challenge, too.
Okay, all right, thanks.
And then, since I have the floor, if you don't mind, I thought I put it on the agenda, but I didn't. I would like to set our meetings for the budget conversations with our department heads tonight.
Was it put that on the agenda?
I, President, may I please ask for your forgiveness that I did not put that on the agenda, so that we can get our dates on the calendar?
It's your show, bud.
Calendar.
What are you, what are you looking at?
Well, my question is, I don't know if you guys want to, we've, in the past, we've always usually done it the first part of July. They, they've kind of, the state is starting to shift our budget cycle a little bit, and dates could potentially be changing in the upcoming years. This year, I haven't, I need to relook at the schedule, at the calendar again. I think we're still on target for November 1st for have everything finalized and off, but I, and I, but I think the county may have gotten theirs bumped up a little bit, so I would like to, if we could, maybe do it in June. If that isn't feasible, then certainly look at the very first part of July to try to get that. And if you want one meeting or two meetings, so far, we've been lucky to get everything all hammered out in one big, long study session.
We've been doing it on that second Tuesday. We used to meet the second and fourth, so would June 13th work? June 13th?
June 13th.
June 13th won't work for me because I will be at my clerk treasures conference.
Okay. Get it prioritized.
I know. If I could drive all the way back from southern Indiana for that meeting, I would do it.
How about the, how about the 6th? The day is that, that would be Tuesday, June 6th. Is that too soon?
I don't think so. I've given the department heads all of their, their numbers to get their information back to me, so it's just a matter of getting all that and me plugging it in. So, I would be able to have it as long as I get it back from them, and I just need to tell them it doesn't...
It's not very far away, you know?
June 6th, would that work?
Well, I mean, it has...
Well, what about the 20th?
20th would be good for me.
June 20th works as well.
That works for me.
June 20th work for you guys?
June 1st.
June 20th.
For budget meetings?
Yes.
In the evening?
Yes.
Why don't we tentatively make, make the 20th the day and start?
Starting at 5:00 or 6:00?
I would say 5:00.
5:00 is what we've done in the past. We started early.
Yeah.
We'll do 5:00, you know? Yeah, yeah.
And then I'll coordinate who goes first based on their schedules.
That's, so 5 o'clock on the 20th for right now, hence the lead-in.
The board day goes first, and the mayor will shift it all around.
Yes, exactly.
Exactly.
What I should do is just give him the working document, say, "You fix it."
Anything else, Shada?
I think that's all I have. I appreciate, thank you.
One other thing, I'd like to again welcome Jackie Foskey, the intern, and no, she's not working on trees, what she's doing, she's hitting parts of Illinois again with some revised letters, starting out by saying, you know, "If you were a Caterpillar vendor, we'd like to talk to you." Caterpillar, you know, leaving Peoria and East Peoria have decimated that area, and lots of people are scrambling right now trying to figure out what they're, they're going to do, so we're trying to attack that area and see what we can, we can come up with. Our Mr. Bowley, his daughter graduated from Notre Dame this weekend, one of the two, and assured me that now he can get his stuff going, and we'll start seeing his presence in Rochester more often now. He'd been coming to Rochester about, oh, three times a month. Now, he's going to start a regular trip over here, so we'll be seeing things happening there very soon. Like to thank Commissioner Randsted for being here tonight and Mrs. Thompson for being here Rick is, as you all know, a new commissioner. I've been attending the county's meetings, not the commissioner's meetings, but the county council meetings for a year. It's great to see you here. I think it helps all of us to know what everybody's doing. You agree? It's, it's part of that working together.
I like to see one at every, you know?
It would be great.
One of us should be at every meeting that way. We know what's going on.
It'd be great.
Tree gets open.
And I kind of make it a practice that if I can't make it, I'll have a Board of Works member there or someone that's, you know, has city tattooed on their forehead. Yeah, yeah, so, but good seeing you here. Thank you. I, yes, ADA concerns, equal concerns? It's your turn.
I skipped you up there, didn't I? No, that's all right. You don't have to put me on there.
Now it's time for the lawyer.
I do have, I do have something that just came to me late last week, so I wasn't able to get it on the agenda. Just a little bit of background, the city presently owns the property of 411 West 11th Street.
Ah, yes, okay.
It owns that by virtue of, I think we talked about this briefly before, owns that by virtue of the fact that tax sale unsuccessfully sold the property, and when that happens, one of the things the county can do is they can turn, assign the certificate to us, and that's what they did. We petitioned, we got the deed. There's an individual living there. I talked with the mayor, and I think it may have been discussed at a prior Board of Works meeting. We thought of the things we could do with it, evicting someone who's lived there a really long time would not be at the top of our list, and so we got two appraisals.
Well, it's right there along with shutting down an orphanage on my list.
Right, yeah. It really would be bad. So, I obtained two appraisals. I put together a proposal to sell that at the average of the two appraised values. The prospective buyer is a family member of the elderly man who lives there now, and so it'd be a very smooth transition, a good way for us not to hang on to this property any longer, and they even agreed to pay for one of the two appraisals that we've done, so we didn't split that cost. And so the total we'd be receiving is $35,135 for this property, and I'd like the council to approve that so I can have the mayor sign the purchase agreement, so...
And the appraisal was what?
The appraisals averaged out to 34,750.
Okay.
And they were only like $500 apart, they're pretty close, so it's not, it's not much as a property to speak of, and it would be a lot of problems trying to get that person out, and so I think the fact that family members were willing to step up and buy just kind of best situation all around, and we're getting the average of those two appraisals plus part of that appraisal cost back, and if the council could approve that, I have the mayor sign the purchase agreement, and as I understand it, there's a check that's waiting, and probably within a week I could get that over, Shada.
Any thoughts on...
I'd make a motion to sell, sell, sell.
We don't like being in that business, do we?
We're not in that business.
Seconded by Goodman.
I'm sorry, who seconded?
Yeah, or it's got to discuss something, yeah.
I would need to abstain from the vote. I've got personal and business dealings with the family.
Oh, that's where you're living now? No. Wait, maybe we do want to.
Yeah, are we getting enough money?
Wait a minute, no, John said we're not in that business.
I apologize, councilman. That's called for.
It's lazy.
Okay, well, it's been moved and seconded that we sell the house for the value that Andy has presented tonight. I should have a show of hands for approval. It's six to one, one abstention.
Six, zero, one.
Six, zero, one. Yes, one abstention. Thank you very much. I would also entertain a motion at this time to adjourn.
I'll move.
And signify by raising your right hand, and it's everybody, okay? Thank you very much.
Oh, wait a minute. Stop.